It's six o'clock. I would like to call this city Truth in Taxation Public Hearing and Input Meeting to Order. Please rise, we'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the council are present, thank you. We will open our public hearing first with introduction and comments. Many of you are here to hear the presentation. This is my first time being mayor and my first year in the mayorship, so this is my first Truth in Taxation meeting. Just a couple of short comments that what you're going to see tonight in your packet. By law, the city council on behalf of the city is required to set a what is called a preliminary levy and then send it to the county. And you have now received those in your mailboxes, most likely. Their proposed tax increases or decreases for next year. However, by law, we're also need to make a presentation on those. In no way necessarily does this reflect what the city's final certified levy will be that we'll likely vote on at the next city council meeting, which is then sent to the county assessor and in which those taxes would be collected. There will also be the opportunity for input at the meeting as well. At this time, I would like to hand it over to Ms. Emma Rudd, City Finance Officer, and she will be giving us a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dill. I just want to welcome everyone to our Truth in Taxation Public Hearing and Input Meeting for December 1st, where we'll be discussing the City of International Falls 2026 Budget and Tax Levy. So the purpose of a Truth in Taxation input meeting, as Mayor Dill indicated, state statute under the Department of Revenue dictates that as a city over a population of 500 people, we are obligated to hold a Truth in Taxation Public Hearing and Input Meeting based on the preliminary tax levy that we set at the end of September 2025. Kuching County, as the taxing authority that does the notices, they send out parcel-specific notices to every parcel between November 11th and the 24th to property owners showing the proposed tax figures, which, as he indicated, you would have received in your mailboxes. The purpose of this meeting here today is to discuss the 2026 city budgets, the 2026 city tax levy, and then answer any questions and seek public input. I do want to make very clear that this is not the meeting to discuss valuations. I know that many have become concerned about the valuations of their home. This is not that meeting. The Local Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting is the meeting to discuss your concerns about property evaluations. That is held in June of each year. So the valuations that were set for 2026 had to be appealed by June 17th in front of the county board. So the next opportunity will be next spring and next June in front of the assessor as well as the county board. I just want to quickly explain the City of International Falls budget process and timeline to hopefully help the public better understand how the city arrived here today. In June of each year, the financial audit is finalized and adopted for prior year financials. In June of 25, we finalized our fiscal year 2024 year-end financials. That gives us an opportunity in mid-July to get out not only six months of actual current year financials and then audited financials for the prior year. And then I began dispersing those to department heads and partnership agencies so that they can begin their process for compiling their budget requests. Then we spend August through September going through proposed budgets at public budget and finance meetings with the city council acting as the Budget and Finance Committee. By the end of September, by state statute, we are obligated to set a preliminary tax levy. Our preliminary tax levy was certified on September 22nd, 2025, which is what you're going to be seeing in this presentation. As Mayor Dill indicated, there has been significant movement since that date, but that is that is the presentation we are obligated to present on. After the adoption of a 2026 preliminary levy, the levy can be lowered, but it cannot be increased. So that is essentially a worst-case scenario. Currently, we're holding the Truth in Taxation meeting where we can better inform you about our preliminary budget and levy, and then we will be eventually setting and adopting our final budget and levy for the fiscal year 2026, ideally at our December 15th, 2025 regular city council meeting, as we've done every year. Next, I want to just briefly go over the general property tax timeline. While none of this is technically dictated by the City of International Falls, we want to make sure the public's well-informed as to the process because it does impact the city and its citizens. I do want to be clear in saying that the City of International Falls does not do any of the valuations. They do not create the property tax statements themselves for city residents. All property valuations are done by the Kuching County Assessor's Office and tax statements are sent out by the Kuching County Auditor Treasurer's Office. And much of this particular timeline that I'm going to be going over is guided by state statute as well as the county's own timelines that they're under. So in January of each year, property values are established by the Kuching County Assessor's Office for use as next year's value. So in January 25, they were already setting the 2026 valuations for your properties and homes. In March, the property tax statements are mailed out for the current year by Kuching County. And then in March and April, the valuation notices are mailed from Kuching County Assessor's Office for next year's valuation. So you should have been receiving your valuation notices for use on your 2026 taxes back in March or April of 2025 in order to give you ample time to appeal those valuations. In May, the first half of your property tax statement, property tax payments, pardon me, are due to Kuching County by May 15. And then in June, the county holds its open book meetings and the Board of Equalization to listen to property valuation disputes. Then in September, preliminary levies must be set by all taxing authorities, the city, the county, and the school district, all by September 30. And then in October, your second half property tax payments are due to the county by October 15. In November, the county starts sending parcel-specific notices to property owners showing their proposed tax figures for the upcoming year, which is what you would have received in your mail just recently. And then in December, the final levies must be set by all taxing authorities for the next year by the end of the month. So the big question people tend to ask is when they receive their proposed tax statement each November is why did my property tax amounts change? Well, there are a myriad of reasons why your property tax amounts change, but these are the most common reasons that people find. One is market valuations, changes in the valuations of your your properties and your homes. The other big one is levies, changes in levies at the various jurisdiction levels from county to city to school district. Another, and this one was heavily discussed last year, but the voter-approved referendums such as a school district referendum that was approved for and implemented for this current fiscal year. So those are always key. And then non-levy revenue sources. So when there's changes in non-levy revenue sources, that can affect your taxes because there need to be adjustments to the levy to accommodate up and down on those non-levy revenue sources. Special assessments, special assessments like road improvements or unpaid assessed bills can impact your taxes. Another is debt issuance. If the local jurisdiction has to issue debt such as bonds and those particular bonds are payable via levy dollars. Not all debt, though, is payable via levy dollars, so keep that in mind. And then legislative changes and mandates. So when there are changes to formulas on calculations such as homestead credits, et cetera. In the 2025 year, that was the first year that we had a major change in the homestead exclusion credit. So on your 25 taxes, a lot of people received the benefit of that. There is no such change in 2026 coming from the legislature at this point. Next, we have net tax capacity. So this might be a term you've never heard before, but it drives a lot of things behind the scenes when calculating your property taxes. So a property's net tax capacity is determined by multiplying the property's taxable market value by the relevant class rate or rates. Class rates are set forth by state statute. They vary by property type and they're uniform statewide. The biggest thing is when the net tax capacity changes, it changes what we call is the makeup of the pie and how the pie is distributed and how the taxes are distributed based on the levy. So if the net tax capacity of Kuching County increase, that can help residents because it redistributes the tax burden. And in fiscal year 2026, there was roughly $900,000 in growth in Kuching County net tax capacity going into this next year, of which roughly $400,000 was within the City of International Falls and roughly $500,000 was in greater Kuching County. I don't have specific reasons why the new growth, but it could be just valuation changes or it could be addition to the tax base. Next, I just want to touch on briefly how to read your proposed tax notice that you received in the mail. So this is an example of a real property located in the City of International Falls. The City of International Falls tax levy is bordered in green on the right-hand side. But I do want to draw your attention to the estimated market value of this property on the left-hand side by the arrow. So this particular property increased in value from $153,800 to $167,600 between 2025 and 2026. So this would have been disclosed to this particular property owner in the spring by the assessor's office, and this property owner would have had the opportunity to appeal this change at the June 2025 Board of Equalization and Appeals Meeting. Now I want to draw your attention to the right-hand side where I have listed what the proposed tax levies for both the city, the county, and the school district are, and then how much this particular property's taxes went up for each of those portions. So for this property, the county proposed levy was 8.99%, whereas the increase this property saw was 16.9% or $85.07. The city proposed levy increase was 20%, whereas the increase this particular property saw for their city portion was 21.7% or $264.53. So just kind of by drawing attention to that, I just want people to understand that what a local governing body approves as their proposed levy increase does not directly equate to what you will necessarily see as an increase on your taxes because there are too numerous of things that we discussed previously that play a part in how your taxes are calculated and what can cause ebbs and flows in the amounts. This particular property had an increase in their market value, so that likely impacted their taxes going up potentially on their city portion more than the 20%. So biggest takeaway on this, I just hope that you understand, never look at just strictly the bottom-line numbers. Educate yourself on why your taxes are going up and down. And if you receive a valuation notice in the spring of each year and you disagree with that valuation, exercise your right to dispute that with the county at the appropriate time when that notice comes out. Now, this is just a breakdown of the preliminary taxes for the previous parcel that we just looked at. So this just breaks out based on taxing jurisdiction for the sample parcel and based on their proposed taxes that were submitted by the taxing authorities in September. So for this particular property of their taxes, 22.18% is made up of county levy, 55.86% is made up of City of International Falls levy, 21.75% is made up of ISD 361's levy, and then 0.21% is made up of other, which is for the ARDC levy that the county has to put on. The 2026 budget priorities include maintaining public safety and emergency services, which also includes finding a permanent solution for our ambulance service and the growing deficit. Another priority that we found in the budget process was long-term planning, whether it be department-wide or citywide, looking at everything and really trying to plan for the long term and be strategic about it. Another major priority that came out of this budget session was the need to replenish some of our general fund reserve balances due to unforeseen expenses that have come up over the years that required us to draw down on some of our reserves. And then last, but most importantly, focusing on sustainable budgeting for 2026 and beyond. Next is our levy breakdown. So the city's proposed preliminary 2026 levy is $4,978,484. That is allocated between six different municipal funds. The largest is our general government fund at 51%, which is where the bulk of our services are provided out of, from police to fire to administration to mayor and council. Virtually everything that doesn't have an alternative revenue source like water and sewer, that is separate, but the bulk of our services come out of our general government fund. Next, we have our permanent improvement fund at 16.9%. Our Parks and Rec Fund at 10.6%. Our ambulance fund at 8.3%. Our library at 7.3% and our reserve for capital outlay at 5.9%. And I'll just note that this is the first time that we are looking to levy for our ambulance fund because this is a special revenue fund. So typically, we would not levy for this, but because of the ongoing need, we are we are going to be looking to levy some dollars in that fund. Next, I'm going to break down our general government fund budget as that is the largest fund that we have. It comprises most of our services, as I said, from administration to police to fire, housing, public works. This information is mostly a summary of what you're seeing on your proposed Exhibit A that was adopted back in September and is included in your packet. So I'm going to start with our administrative operating budgets, which total $1,106,46, of which is made up 69% from administration, 11% from mayor and council, 11% from city attorney, 7% from auditing and accounting services, 1% from boards and commissions, and 1% from elections. Next is our 2026 public safety operating budget, which totals $3,583,263, of which police comprises 66%. The fire hazmat departments comprise 24%. Building and fire code inspection comprises 9% and the pound master comprises 1%. And I specifically want to draw attention to the fact that we specifically receive and have budgeted for $240,000 in intergovernmental revenue from state funds designated for specific portions of our police, fire, and hazmat operational and training budgets. And we have to essentially provide proof of what we use those monies on. Next, we have our 2026 Public Works and Facilities operating budgets, which total $2,284,257, of which 53% is comprised from the street department, 17% from street lighting, 12% from facilities, 7% from street garage, 7% from storm sewer, 4% from engineering, and just under 1% for shade tree. Lastly, we have our 2026 Unallocated Operating Budgets, which total $432,724, which tends to be the fund that a lot of people question because of the name of it, but it's strictly the name of the department because it's kind of where the misfit expenses go that don't fit really anywhere else. 52% of this budget is allocated to tax abatement. 27% is allocated to the airport. 15% is to pay own retiree insurances and HRA. 5% is to other unallocated and less than 1% in allocations to the cemetery, senior center, and Friends Against Abuse respectfully. Next, we have our partnership agencies for 2026. And while some of these were previously touched upon in the Unallocated Operating Budget, I just want to draw attention to these and recognize these in one place. In the 2026 proposed budget, we have a funding designated to provide $1,000 to Friends Against Abuse, $2,000 to the Senior Center, which we're under contract with, $4,000 to Forest Hill Cemetery, $32,000 to the Borderland Humane Society, for which we have a contract and provide all utilities and maintenance on the building as we own it, and then $115,500 to the airport. The next three, I'll have you, or next two, pardon me, I'll have you know have no direct impact on the levy at all. We provide roughly $9,600 to KCCTV from franchise fees from Midco that are remitted to us and then via Midco from cable users. And then that money is turned around and provided to KCCTV in support of them providing us the PEG channel number seven, where area events and meetings are both recorded and streamed for the public to watch. And then lastly, we're providing $20,000 to the Bronco Gounagurski Kuching County Historical Museum out of our 809 fund, which is supported not via levy dollars. Next, I'll be breaking down the seven revenue sources that support our general fund. 59% of our general fund is supported via LGA. So the budgeted amount of $4,948,240 is an increase of $10,758 or 0.22% over 2025. Next, we have 30% made up of property tax levy monies, budgeted amount of $4,978,484, which is an increase of $829,747 or 20% over 2025, of which $2,537,100 is set to be specifically allocated to the general fund with $1 million of that going into reserves, replenishing reserves. 3% is to other intergovernmental revenue, budgeted amount of $262,385, which is an increase of $34,385 or 15.08% over 2025. And this is the area that includes the $240,000 in revenue for public safety specific items. Then we have 3% for miscellaneous interest income. We've budgeted an amount of $229,600, an increase of $17,600 or 8.3% over 2025. 3% is public charges for service, budgeted amount of $227,239, which is an increase of $21,539 or 10.47% over 2025. 2% is licenses and permits, budgeted amount of $147,325, which is a decrease of $18,175 or 10.98% over 2025. And then less than 1% is made up of fines and forfeitures with a budgeted amount of $47,000, which is a decrease of $10,000 or 17.54% over 2025. The next slide is just a chart showing the LGA and property tax levy trends that we try to show every year. Again, this year, we didn't receive a big LGA increase. And in most years, we do not, and we tend to not have large enough LGA increases to keep up with inflation. Next, we just kind of have some summary and comments pertaining to what I found to be the 2026 key levy factors making up the 20% levy increase for 2026. So reasons for some of the increased costs. So we are in this particular preliminary budget, we are budgeting to put $1 million back into general fund reserves. We have added an additional levy specific to the ambulance in the amount of $414,873 or 10% of that 20% total. We also saw effects of inflation and rising costs and resources such as utilities, fuel, et cetera, and then increases on employee wages, benefits, insurances, as well as inflation on workers' comp insurance premiums, and then the addition of the state mandated paid leave premiums. Some savings drivers that we found, we had an LGA increase. While it's small, we are appreciative, $10,758. We did reallocate the Riverfront Improvement Project Internal Tax Abatement over to the EDA in order to recoup roughly $70,000 in what would normally be levied for out of the general levy. So we have redistributed, we are redistributing that. And then we have reduced public work staff by one. And then we are also deferring capital outlay purchases under this version of the budget. And you can kind of see, you know, overall on there, on the circle, kind of with how much each fund went up and down, kind of where that plays into in terms of the 20%. Next, we have our Exhibit A of our preliminary proposed budget and levy. You can see under the General Fund 101, those were the expenditures that I was just discussing earlier. I did not go through our non-levy budget funds, but the information's outlined on the Exhibit A. If there are not levy dollars funding it, it has an alternative funding model. For instance, it might be an enterprise fund like our water and sewer funds that have utility fees supporting it, or our Voyagers National Park Fund that is supported by lease revenues. In any event, these other funds do not impact your city levied property taxes. The bottom outlines some of our appropriations that we discussed earlier as well as some of the trends for our levy and our LGA figures for the last several years. Next, we have a news release from the Minnesota Department of Revenue that explains that based on preliminary proposed levies that they receive from everyone, the cities are going up on average 8.7%, counties are going up on average 8.1%, and school districts are going up on average 5.8%. And then lastly, before we get to questions, I just want to briefly explain what we've been doing since the proposed levy and budget was set in September. Obviously, I, we had to present on the preliminary levy, but I do want you to understand kind of some of the movement that has happened since then. And there's actually even been even more movement since last week when this was all put together that the council hasn't even seen. So I won't be discussing that, but there's there's more movement that'll be coming forward as well as we continue to have budget meetings in anticipation of a final levy. We've continued to work and look at other areas and opportunities for cuts, whether it be in 2026 or future years. And I really appreciate everyone's willingness to keep digging. We've held five more budget meetings in October and November. We're holding another one tomorrow, and then we have our normal budget meeting on Monday. So I'm hoping we're nearing the end because time is ticking. Some significant changes to the draft working budget since the preliminary budget levy were approved on September 22 include the reduction in the ambulance levy from the $414,873, which was 10% of the increase, down to half of that, which is $207,437 or 5%. We reduced the amount that we were going to replenish the general fund reserves from $1 million to $800,000. At that point, we had removed the airport of $115,500 appropriation. We've also removed a police officer through attrition, which is roughly 100- We've also removed a police officer through attrition, which is roughly 100, nearly $120,000 in savings, and then we've refined other miscellaneous expenses. All in all, I would say there's a strongly likelihood that our city levy will come down significantly from that 20% given discussions we're having at a committee level. So stay tuned for that. Next, we just have some helpful resources of different options for property tax relief that you can look into, whether it be the state property tax refund or the senior citizen property tax deferral program. These are just two of the more common ones, but there are other ones out there, including opportunities for disabled veterans, et cetera. So just, you know, look into what you may or may not qualify for out there. And then lastly, I just want to thank all of our department heads, city council, for your time and effort in this budget process. I would just ask that we first see if man and council have questions and comments, and then after that, I think we could probably open it up to the public for questions and public input.
Thank you, Emma. At this time, we'll move on to city council questions, comments before we move to public input per the hearing. We've now seen where we were at with the September deadline and what the city originally proposed to give ourselves room to work. That number has been coming down through multiple, multiple budget meetings. This is changing by the day, literally. And so Emma has been updating the council with those updates. We meet again tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. and at the next city council meeting, which is December 15th. It would be our intention to certify it, and I know that the council is working to get the levy down to what's deemed reasonable. At this time, the floor is open for discussion. Police Counselor Wegner.
Emma, thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it.
You're most welcome.
If there's no further discussion from the council, we can move on to public input, questions, and comments. Please, if you would like, feel free, come forward. It's five minutes, and name and address for the record, please. Administrator Bergstrom, could you arrange to take time? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Nielsen, 502 Memorial Drive. Sorry to take a few minutes of your time to educate me on some of these things, but maybe some other members of the public have the same questions I have, so I'll try to make it quick. Increases for employee wages. I'm curious, and this is a multi-layered question. I'm curious which employees, if it's all city employees, or if it's specific departments, or if it's even specific employees, who, who, who's getting an increase for employee rate wages?
There is essentially two flavors of that. One is the city is under contract with much of its staff in different departments. So those wages are per the contract that's negotiated between the representing party, meaning the union, and whoever has been appointed to represent the city council. On the salaried side, and consider non-union, that is up to the city council to entertain pay increases.
So people who per contract are getting pay increases, well, or the people non-union that's not in the contract, when was their last raise?
For salaried?
Any of them? Like, has it been five years since they've received a raise, or three years, or do they get one every year? And, and how much is the raise? Is it set per percentage?
The, the, the union contracts, I believe all of them have an increase every single year. On the salaried side, this year is what, at the last budget meeting, was considered was 3% for salaried staff, which I think totaled $34,000.
So these are anticipated. If you have a contract that says every year, certain employees are going to get a certain raise, I guess, and we don't have to discuss it further, I guess I'm just confused as why, if we know they're coming up, why aren't they automatically in the budget? Why are we using a levy to pay for them? But that could be my lack of education on budgets. Kind of the same thing with increases in fuel and insurance. We know those things are going to go up every year, right? We know that two years from now, gas is going to cost more than it does now. So I don't know. When I'm doing my budget at home, I can anticipate those rises in cost and include them in my budget, not, I wouldn't personally have to create a new levy, like go into my savings account to pay for things I've anticipated are going to go up in price. But that's, doesn't matter. The administrative operating budget, I have a few questions. Do departments like the ambulance, the street department, the water department, fire, and police, does the administration of those departments, does the cost of administration come out of their individual budgets? Or is administering those departments come out of this administration 69% of this operating budget?
Typically, no. The city administrator's budget encompasses her department. I'm going to defer to Emma. I don't believe that, for instance, the fire department, I don't believe a portion of Betty's wage is charged to those.
No, what I mean is, if I'm in charge of the police department and I have an annual budget, am I paying for my own administration? Or is the administration of the police department included in this 69%?
It would be included. The administrative department oversees all administrative.
For the entire city.
For the entire.
Regardless of.
But the administrator doesn't, for the sake of the conversation, run the police or fire.
No, I understand that, but the police department's administrative budget is paid not out of their individual budget, but out of this budget. Is that what you're saying?
Do you want me to speak to that?
Please.
So it's, it's a little bit more complex than that. So it varies by department to department. It depends on how much administrative support an individual department requires. So if you're talking specific to the police department, the police department has a part-time administrative assistant that oversees a lot of their things because it's very nuanced, and there's a lot of legal requirements that come forth through the B C A with Bureau of Criminal Apprehension Group, and there's, so.
I'm sorry, but my five minutes is almost up, so I need a short version.
Sure.
So basically, that administrative person you're talking about.
They come out of the police department.
Right. Not, not this, not this 69.
Correct.
Okay. So ambulance, do they have administrators that are paid through their separate individual budget?
They don't have additional administrative support outside their ambulance chief.
Okay. And then my last question is, 3%, the revenue sources for the general fund, 3% public charge for, charges for services. So you're anticipating, you're going to make $21,000. Do I, do I understand this correctly? You're going to make $21,539 more next year in public charges? So my question is, is that an increase? Like, if I come and I need a photocopy of something from the office downstairs, then they charge me a dollar per page, is that price going up to $1.50 per page? Or are there new services that are going to cost me money that aren't costing me money Or am I misunderstanding what that is entirely?
I would have to look into specifically what that is, but that's not what I'm budgeting for. I have no way of knowing if someone's going to come in and get photocopies. It's, it's based on specific recurring things that we're seeing on an annual basis, and it's typically from outside entities, not from private citizens.
Excellent, because what my concern was, that our taxes are already paying the salaries of the administrative staff. So then, when we have certain needs, we're paying a service charge on top of it, but that's not the case.
That's not what I'm budgeting for.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Nancy Imhoff, 339 Third Street. Kind of going to follow up with what he was talking about. So currently today, you're at this 5.12 levy increase. Recently, were you lower than that?
I think we've been down to 4.3.
Okay. That's what I thought.
I think it's gone up and down, how many, I think we've had 14, 15 meetings. We're having another one tomorrow, so it, that.
So what would have, what would have been the, the reason? What, what did you figure in for the increase in that 4.3 to 5.1? How did it go back up again? What was?
There was a recommendation for the salaried city staff to receive a 3% pay increase.
I don't know how you guys warrant that, honestly. It's like, the financial situation that the city is in and the administration, who 69% of this budget here still gets a raise, it's like, is it too much to ask to just hold steady for a year or two? I mean, I think most of us are going to feel that way. And I'm sure this, I'd like to know, and I'm sure you don't have that handy, but this, this operating budget of $1,106,046, I'd like to know what that was maybe three to five years ago, because that's certainly gone up. And now, on top of that, there's 3% raises. It's a much bigger administration than it was not too long ago. And not only that, but now they've, they've also gotten raises. And we're trying to decrease the tax levy. So I don't know if any of you have any comments on that. I, I don't think that seems really fair. It's nothing personal against anybody in those positions, but in the position that we're in and us tax, as taxpayers, I think maybe they could have foregone the wage increase. That's my personal opinion, so I.
Thank you.
I don't know how you guys can warrant that, honestly.
Well, nothing to address your question. Nothing is set in stone yet. We're meeting tomorrow. Of course, over the proposed levy, what, what's the budget going to be?
I would reconsider that if I were you. We make, we know, we know, they make very, very good money. I don't think holding off on wage increases, considering the situation, would be life-altering for, for that, anyone in that department at this point. But it might help decrease the levy for us. Something to think about.
Bobby Bernath, 1906th Avenue. I was just wondering, and maybe I didn't hear it or whatever, but when is the last time the administration did get a raise? And what was the percentage?
The salaried staff of the city received a pay raise for the year of 2025, which is this year, in February, March, April timeframe of 3%.
So every year, they're getting 3% raise?
At the council's discretion. Yes or no? The council could give more, they could give less, they could give nothing. But to answer your question, all at the discretion of the city council.
So I did a little bit of math just back here, and I, I'm just going to say, city administrator, that's almost $3,500 increase per year. Am I correct on that? That's a lot of money. I mean, people in P C A don't even get that.
Rhonda Benedict, 909 Sixth Street. My first, very first question is, why did you take the table microphone away and put the stand here?
I felt for accessibility reason, it made the most sense logically. That's, that's the truth.
So when you gave your presentation, you told us to educate ourselves on why our taxes are going up. I don't think we need to educate ourselves. I think we've been educated over the last how many months of why our taxes keep going up. We've been here fighting for why our taxes are going up, so I don't think we really need to educate ourselves very much on it. And you say to go to the county assessor and dispute our tax increases.
No, dispute if you have an issue with your valuation, not your taxes.
Well, that's the reason that you say our taxes are going up. Done that, been there, done that, and they've given every reason under the, under the book why, and they're all really not good reasons.
I agree.
Yeah. I've given, I've gotten three different reasons in the very same meeting, so that's a bunch of blark. Nancy answered one of my, asked one of my questions already. I think we all know why our taxes are going up. We've all been here arguing and complaining about it, and I agree 100% of, it was supposed to be 4.3, 4.3, now it's 5.0, so our taxes are going up just because everybody needs a raise. I think that's pretty poor. And to give the big presentation of where all our money goes, isn't that where our money's been going every single year to all these side things? Kind of the same things that our town has been paying for, right? All those little side things. All the other big things that have been coming up are the extra things, so we all know about those extra things. Obviously, we've been here fighting for those things, so we know that. That's why we've been here fighting. So we're trying to get our taxes down, and they just keep going up. So again, obviously, they're going up. So obviously, we're all here again because we're all disgusted. So we hope that you get it down, because obviously, we're not happy. We all know that, like you said, stay off Facebook, it's crap. Well, if you read, once the thing came out, everybody was on Facebook saying how much their taxes went up. So we all kind of know what everybody's taxes are. So everybody's not happy, not just the people in this room. If you go on Facebook and read the thread, everybody's saying how much their taxes went up. So there's quite a few people that aren't happy. So that's all I have to say.
Is there any additional comment at this time?
I've got one question. Can you claim your taxes?
Please come forward, sir.
How are you all doing? I'm Scott Karak, I live at 309 Sherwood Drive. My question is, okay, the city, 8.7 increase, my taxes increased 41%. Why did my increase, 41%, the state of Minnesota says 8.7? What kind of baloney goes on here?
That's a question that Emma attempts every year to address in her presentation, and so in my own words, and if I make a mistake, please correct me immediately. The city council, when we decide how much money we're going to need to run the town, and let's say it's $5 million, I made that number up. That's what the number is. It goes to the council. It goes to the county. We have no say in how they collect it. How they collect it is set by the county assessors, following state law, and valuing each property on a sale or every five years in a quintile adjustment, to then determine all the classifications, residential, commercial, et cetera, and then they decide how they're going to collect the money and give it to us. So we have, the city council cannot say, we don't like you on Shorewood Drive or over in Stenberg, we're going to charge you more because they might be nicer homes. That's absolutely not the way it works. The money that we're going to levy for, whatever the number is, gets sent to the county, and they are the bill collector.
Because the way it looks like, you've got houses, two different houses on the same block, they only pay the same amount of taxes. Way it's, way it is, it's all bocas, it's, everybody should pay just about the same. Why should one house be more than the other? You know, really?
That's an issue that is at the state level that I cannot even begin to.
Okay, then how much money you get back from the state, state of Minnesota? Don't you get something from the state of Minnesota for up here? Don't you get some government money from, from our Mr. Walls down there?
The city does receive aid, the primary.
How much aid?
Approximately $5 million. It's called, in the form of local government aid, which is sent, I believe, from the state's general fund to all cities statewide, and that is based on a formula that is contentious. International Falls happens to get a lot of local government aid in comparisons to other cities our size.
Does that include with, like, say, your population? Because we've got a dwindling population, so doesn't that, so you, don't you get more money from the state of Minnesota to help make up for the loss of revenue on this?
The, the way that we receive our local government aid payments is based on a formula set by the legislature.
You get that quarterly, you get it monthly, or how you all get that?
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
And the point of local government aid was to even out the property tax levy. I understand that 5% levy may be too high, or 10, or maybe 3% is too high. But the idea of that was to give cities a baseline aid that they could then build off with their levy. That goes back about 50-plus years.
Okay. And you also get revenue from the airport, too, don't you? From, from Delta Airlines, don't you get 2.5 million, something like that? Because I, if I remember reading that article, I got a letter at home, it was from midge, hibbing in here, Delta gave them a whole bunch of money so that they'd keep flying here because they're a borderland state. You get, how much money do you get from, from Delta Airlines?
In regards to that question being an airport commission question, Delta Airlines, which is actually SkyWest Airlines, flies to all of those cities you mentioned on a federal subsidy called Essential Air Service.
That's correct, and then you get a kickback from your airport for that service.
Yes, the SkyWest Airlines leases.
That's correct. You get for every, every seat, or how, how it's figured out, you get money appropriate that, I don't know how many times a year you get that, if it's monthly, quarterly, I have no clue, but, but I know they get rev, I know they get a kickback. I know that.
It goes to the airport. We don't see that. It goes to the airport.
I realize that, but you said, right here in this, says, airport, it says $115,500.
That's what we have to pay out there.
And you don't get none of that money back?
No. That's for operations.
All right. Thank you very much. You gentlemen, have a nice evening. Thank you.
You as well. The floor is open for more comment at this time, please. Seeing none at this time, we will move on, and I will close the public hearing. Is there any other reason to have a hearing at a future date?
I don't believe so.
I don't either at this point. Is there any other business or discussion amongst the council before I adjourn the meeting? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.